In a hierarchy of things, is there some way we can differentiate when somebody throws out appendix D? Okay, what was that, two or -- maybe we can use Russian lettering for the DEIS?
Differentiate the appendices and the DEIS from the FIS.
Aren't a lot of them the same but some are new?
That's -- I'm just, you know, just trying to -- if there's a nomenclature on it.
Can we keep the appendices the same? I mean, in FEIS or DEIS?
Yeah, and if there's a new one, it's a new one.
Or it should be FEIS.
Yeah.
That's what it should be. And if there's no changes to the previous one, it's just referenced as DEIS. Because, yeah, that's exactly what has happened.
That would be clear.
Okay.
All right, yeah, that does helpful for me to -- okay. I did get a comment, oh, my comment is on -- oh, you're on page 22, right? Was that your first comment?
Beginning of the ecology section.
Yeah. You said ahead, sorry?
Yeah, it was more of a question.
Okay.
These are different.
I need yours.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right ahead.
I guess at the end of the response section where it says environmental specialists hired by the project sponsor will visit the site once a year, I'm curious, is that ongoing, during construction?
I'm sorry, I was trading.
Where, which one?
You're on the second, page 22, second paragraph.
The end of section.
Where we have the environmental specialists will visit the site once a year. Is that when, is that after construction? Or, I guess, that's the way I read it. I'm not sure.
Will visit the site once a year and meet with town land specialist James Barber to assess the site for invasive species?
Well, it says, it starts out by identifying a three-year monitoring program, which was Spider's recommendation, so it's once a year for three years.
Three years after construction.
After construction.
After construction.
What about the second phase? Is that reinstitutes?
Which one are you in?
The second phase of construction.
Yeah, all wetland mitigation is in the first phase.
Phase one.
Right, but then when phase two starts, is it going to re-institute the monitoring?
Well, that's what I covered with it. I said the monitoring program will use this up a maintenance program in the future to control invasive species that reemerge. Yeah, I remove the if necessary. There'll be some program. And they can decide what it is.
Three years after the completion of construction, in phase one.
In phase one.
And then phase two will be there. Does further monitoring go on in phase two to determine if there's a structural impact on the wetlands or no? I just want to clarify for --
All the wetlands impacts are in the first phase.
How come you have different pages on the front? Oh, mine's draft.
Yeah.
Why does mine say draft on it though?
Why'd you get it drafted?
I downloaded it today. Mine says draft.
Anyway, I was, okay. I think we just want to clarify that, that the three-year program is going to be after the construction on it, and that the monitoring program will be set up to control invasive species. There'll be some, whatever, if the program says check every six months or check every five years, there'll be an agreement on it, okay? And it can be as light or as heavy as whatever the specialists come up with.
So my question is, so when Spider shows up to meet with your hired specialist, who pays for Spider?
It's ongoing monitoring costs. I think that's part of it.
So the applicant would have a, like a --
There should be some kind of endowment to pay for those.
So there's an ongoing escrow even after --
No, it wouldn't be an escrow. It wouldn't be --
It would be an endowment he pays to begin with.
Or it'd be part of the cost of the town services. We get an estimate of Spider's time for meeting with him on a yearly basis, and it's part of the town's cost of services.
So the town pays for it?
Town would pay for it.
Wouldn't the applicant put up some funds?
Well, yeah. And again, just like emergency services or any other services.
How's it work currently? Is it like how it currently works?
For any monitoring that the town does, there's a --
I think Dave knows how it works now.
I think Spider comes up the first time free, and after that, it's on an hourly rate. I think it's $75 an hour, I'm not sure.
That's the way it works for the town. Right, this would be different because it would be a conditional rule.
Right.
And we needed to determine how much to give.
Yeah.
For any kind of monitoring of anything, it's going to be an account of some sort. And this would be whether we needed Dave to go out to look, because there's an agreement on checking the road, something or other, whatever it is, right? Wouldn't it be out of that type of account?
I think we did do one for stop and shop.
Yeah.
Well, you have inspection fees part of the --
Right, so this would be inspection fee.
Too, I mean, that, we're going to have to post them.
Bond or whatever.
Yeah.
This is a minor point on this. In general, if this is going to be the FEIS, I don't think we should refer to individuals. What if Spider, I have all the confidence in world of him.
Yeah, you're right.
But what if he just has to move to Borabor?
I was going to raise that too.
Should it be by title or?
Well, it's town specialist.
It's a town specialist, period. You don't need to comment.
When you refer to Spider and working with him on the current work of doing that, that's fine.
Ongoing, don't.
But, but again, you know, when you're going out, it's really working with the town wetland specialist.
And then I'm curious, because in Spider's November 13 report, he talks about, and this is from his report, such a program could be managed and implemented by a team that includes SUNY faculty and students, forming an important part of the education program. So it doesn't seem like you guys have mentioned doing stuff like that in this report. Have you chosen not to, or?
What was that?
Well, I mean, ask the question again, I mean, I'm sorry, I was dicking now.
Spider's comment.
I think Spider's suggesting that SUNY has some involvement in these types of reviews. And that was from his report, but you guys don't mention that at all in your draft FEIS. I'm just curious why not?
That's, it's something we're right, really, I mean, it's just not thing, we're not looking to commit to unless it's a condition of approval.
Let's put that on, let's put that in the, I'll put it in the parking lot of questions to ask when we get them both here next week. Let's put that out there. Because it's a commitment of a third party. And you can't make an applicant force --
Absolutely. I'm not, I wouldn't suggest making the applicant. I'm just curious.
But it may be something --
It just seems like an opportunity. It seems like a great way to combine this project with the college.
And that's, I just want to tell you, that's exactly what we did with our IT. And it was, it never had to be and never was part of the secret process or the project process. It was just a working together with the college to do it. And actually, we worked directly with our IT as a training exercise. We taught them for two years how to get a permit, unfortunately. And then we taught them the rest of the time in the subsequent classes how to, actually, we took the wetlands there and created mud flats. So it's ongoing. It's just nothing that was part of the approval process for the project.
Well, you might be, but I think we may want to, we'll talk to Spider next week, but we maybe want to stick a sentence in there to highlight that, if possible, you know?
Yeah, and you have to see if SUNY's interested, which you'd think they would be.
Okay.
It can be a problem to be too specific about these things. The important thing is to not, by writing something in, exclude all sorts of possibilities that may occur depending on how the students, the college, whatever people are actually on the ground and have interests and things come up with, so.
You mean not dictate a process that might be, they may have come up with something better?
Yeah, or something else, or something that would work better.
It might be not the group that Spider's thinking about, but it may be another group. Or maybe other thing, okay. Well, we'll try to word that in there. But, you know, I've marked it there, I think we've highlighted, we'll try to get a word in on that.
It's hard to hit the right balance between specificity and --
No agreement whatsoever. It was just a ongoing discussions, because it changed every semester. Every semester, the school decided to, to, again, one semester, the priority was looking at the approval process, and another semester is the design process, but it was, it was just simply part of the curriculum that they would come back to us. They ultimately had our wetland specialist teach some of the --
So what men are saying is, is right, that you don't want to lock yourselves out of anything that would develop down the road.
Yeah, I mean, we can put it in association with that. But we marked it, we'll think about the right wording on it, but I think it's a good idea. And it's nothing, anything else on page 22 or 24? 24.
23, generally, the vernal pools, you need to consider how provided, whether or not they will work in the long term. I think that's, I think they're good, I'm not sure that they're --
Well, I think you want --
I think they could be presented as experimental, because I think they are experimental, and I don't think it's a sensible requirement to put in having vernal pools in places where they hadn't been before. But as a, an experiment in seeing if you can create these things and have them work, it's quite interesting, and it could be wonderfully useful to people doing ecological studies and environment, you know, environmental.
Yeah, we have, we have the ongoing three-year monitoring program where wetland inspector and ours go out and meet. I think what we want in, probably in that report, is probably a report not only on invasive species, with status of the vernal pools, and, you know, kind of a report on a few different areas on it that we could chat down as part of a, their, their monitoring that's going on.
This is, what I would like to say is, this is a good example of why I'd like Spider and Martin to be in the room to discuss that topic. Vernal pools have taken on a little bit different life moving forward with the next iterations of stormwater and green infrastructure. Before, we had a lot of the green infrastructure practices, vernal pools were a little more risky business as far as getting created and sustained. Now, and if we start to scrutinize our site plan, I think you'd see that we've tried to incorporate both the green infrastructure with the vernal pool, which is Spider's concept. I prefer not to say more, because I'd really like those two experts to be in the room.
Again, you know, it's another spot that we want to flag and raise the question when we get those two guys in a room here, okay?
But --
Unless we, unless we focus them on it, they'll tend to wander.
I could thought about calling Spider, really questioning about what was on his mind, but I felt that would be inappropriate since it wouldn't be something at a general meeting.
Well, he's your consultant, so, he's been a great resource.
Yeah, he definitely is. You know, I just find the stormwater detention ponds and the various stormwater things extremely interesting all over the place, because of course, if you have water in a depression, it does collect a whole bunch of animals right away. Some of the most important discoveries of dragonfly nymphs have been found actually in wheel ruts.
And I always thought that was spiders, not spiders, mosquitoes growing ground.
But I just think it's kind of fascinating that this should be attempted as part of a design. It's icing on a cake.
Okay.
That's exactly what I think the board wants to put in findings, that this is a bonus. Because otherwise, it's a conditional, it's a part of the site plan, and will need to be revisited or removed as a site plan, site plan requirement if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
We can just contemplate that possibility.
We would, a bonus would be one word, what we'd like to say is, it's a positive impact of the project. I mean, we were, we do feel there's a few positive impacts to this project, and I don't think we should be --
Spider, grab them when you can.
I don't think we should be afraid to say that, and I'll stop there.
But I think what George is saying is, if it doesn't work as a vernal pool, if it just turns out to be a nice frog pond, that's fine.
I think Spider brought that to our attention when we met with him a while ago. There are several benefits to, you know, improving the quality of the wetlands.
Right.
Because I've seen several test pits that turned into really nice little.
All right, getting back to the document, folks. Page 25?
Page 25. I have a question on page 25 for George Kramel.
If you have a question in mind, I think you have.
Response, okay. In several places, here, this is where I noticed it for the first time, the applicant is saying, it's not regularly, the wetland project is not, the wetland course law is not approved, of course, and so now there's no legal basis for considering it.
It says it's not legally adopted.
It's not legally adopted, so it can't be enforced.
That currently is true, there is an appeal pending. The second department will determine whether or not, I forget the name of the judge, but they'll determine whether or not that was correct. If the second department reverses this determination, the law will be in effect, will continue in effect.
Whether applied to this, yes.
Yes.
It'll apply to this.
At that point, there may be additional permitting considerations that the board will have to consider, and that may be something that we should consider whether we need to address here, so that it's a secret part of the study.
So do you play, say, would it be advisable to go ahead and at least allow for the possibility that it will be at some point, something --
I would not, I would suggest to revise that language to reflect the actual circumstance, which is, there is a decision, the decision is on appeal, and the court, the appellate courts will determine the applicability. I think for reason the town appealed it is, they believe and appeal that's merit. Something the, both the board and the applicant should consider as potential outcome and consider while --
We already taken that into consideration in design?
Yeah.
Yeah, I want to state as clear as I can, we have always made the assumption for four years that there would be a wetland law in place. So if we've, I mean, and we've tried to abide by what we felt that law would be or was drafted in and out of the courts. So I guess I would look for your guidance in rewriting that. It's difficult.
I took out the --
It's difficult for us to rewrite based on your status.
I took out what you had in parentheses.
But one of the aspects, when we, when I say we've assumed that it would be there, was that the way previous iterations were drafted gave the town and their wetland consultant advising you the ability to work with the buffer areas, the 50-foot, things of that nature. Based on his recommendations, certain things could be waived. When I say we've always assumed the wetland ordinance would be there, if ultimately you change the ordinance to say, no discretion, 50-foot buffer, that, that could be an issue. We've, we have followed the law for four years, abided by it to the best we could, but one of the importances is, and we talk about vernal pools and enhancements to the wetland buffers, that's been always part of that discussion, that the law allowed to occur.
Yep.
Yeah, but there are several points where you simply say, since the buffer facility, the buffer facility is not enforceable, and then you go on and say you'll do some, it's not particular on this page.
Yeah, I hope we haven't stated that it's not enforceable too strongly, because the, because the, okay, and that's wording we need to change, so.
You've worked, and we've, I mean, even all the way back from the scope, we've talked about using the law, because somewhere in this process, it will be in effect.
It'll show up.
And it's been, and it's been out, it's been in, but you've worked with whatever that existing law said on building this thing. So that's why I took out that, that one in more emphasis. If there's another spot, let me know where that is. Well, yeah, 26, I have some of that, so. I think, yeah, the only thing I've written down here is, I need a --
Well, it gets us back to the conservation easement.
Oh, you're talking down on the bottom, woodlands.
There's some, right.
On the top, I just needed to review plantings in a buffer area.
They're fine, I'm really curious to see how the enhanced buffers work.
Yeah, that, well, I was going to look at that.
I'd like to compare it with what's happened at woodland pond.
I think that's, we'll get, next week, we'll get the guys to talk about how the enhanced buffers will work, get us a better understanding of that. And if we have to put a little more verbiage in there, we'll --
By the way, if there's, if there's a reference to something that isn't --
Very clear descriptions and everything, but I'd like to actually see them.
But if there is something that hasn't worked, I'd like, that would be good if we could know about it. I'm very serious, because right now, we've been talking to Spider about what he wants in the way of enhancements. But if there's some reason that something hasn't worked, I'd like a scenario --
Well, they didn't pretend to have enhanced buffers, but they had some stuff on steep slopes.
Okay.
Some of, most of the things that they planted didn't thrive, and the native things that wanted to grow there anyway have.
Okay.
And so, you know, it got covered, it's just not according to plan.
Okay.
But it was native species, right?
It was the stuff that wanted to grow there.
Stuff that was probably there before.
Or in soil, seeds.
Right, actually, there's a lot of that that's covered in, in the topsoil, the plantings and the seeding section that I'm sure you've seen.
Yeah, I just thought it was interesting.
Okay.
Should we talk about the conservation easement?
We got it in a couple of different places here, in, in the write-up. And we've gone back and forth on it a number of times. I think the key, from my point of view, is can, from the planning board perspective, protect that area.
Right.
And I think the tools that we have in place now to protect that area is, is wetlands, the existing wetlands are, you know, not buildable, or the Army Corps, and they're all defined and marked. I think the second thing we have is site plan approval, folks, in case we forget that, that anything, to the extent of putting in a new dumpster, has to come before the planning board for review, to get approval of to be put in there. And, you know, those were the things I fell back on, that there wasn't a heck of a lot of areas to build on a, on a property, to modify it to begin with, and that, you know, we can put in a, in a finding statement, a strong statement to the effect that the area that is not being built upon should be preserved going forward.
Should be preserved, that doesn't have any legal force, should be preserved.
Well, to the extent that they can't put anything on it without going before a board.
No.
Right, but they come before, hypothetically, they come before us, and you're doing something that's, you know, permitted use in the zone, even though it was predicated, so they're just going to ask for it, or, you know, a modification to the site plan? So then what's, what's the choices then that the board have, George?
You would conduct a secret review of the action as a, as proposed in the future, taking into account representation made at this time. So you would basically look at the overall action as it affects that area. So someone might come in and say, well, we built all this stuff, now we just want to cut down half of the trees. You would look at it in the --
And then, yeah, tie years.
So you'd be looking at the secret consequence of approving that action, not with respect to a developed site, but to the undeveloped site that was represented to you at this point, as remaining that way for the, yeah, remaining that way.
Right.
Not to say it can never change, but you can consider the consequence. Well, the, the other point to bring up in this context, I agree with the general principle of law that is stated in the BSKA letter, which is the board can't gift an interest in its property. A gift is something where you're not compensated. What typically happens in the context of a land development is there are conditions of approval, most conditions may require an easement or a conservation easement or restriction of some form on property. But when those things happen in the context of a conservation easement that someone may think is eligible for a charitable contribution, they're disallowed, because there is consideration for that easement. So if the board determines that it is an appropriate mitigation measure to require a conservation easement, I believe it is something you can do as a condition of your approval. And that's something for the board to consider as a board score.
I think we should have that option.
But let me also point out --
You're saying, though, George, you're saying that this board can require that my client give a conservation easement?
Not give, or to protect the land that's of concern, avoid an impact, conservation easement, appropriate to give.
Well, I don't think that's state of the law.
Well, you can show me the law.
If we need to, we will. Let's see where we go with that, but I don't --
The other, the other point that the boards need to understand is, even though conservation easement is very difficult, or relatively difficult to undo, it can be undone with consent of all parties.
And we could also have amendments to it. We could have, we could have a review every 10 years to see if it's still of conservation value, whether it's --
That's true, it's, well, it could be a tender, it does not be --
It doesn't have to be.
There's a conservation easement under New York State law, with revision of the environmental conservation law, which has specific requirements, and that is not necessarily the only form of conservation easement that can be employed, because what you are concerned about is maintaining that as undeveloped land, or --
Right. As long as it has conservation value. I mean, I could see circumstances where it, at some point, doesn't have conservation value, in which case I have no problem. I mean, I don't, and I'm sure the other members of the board don't want to rue from the grave for it in perpetuity. I mean, we're a perfect board.
Yeah, or where you balance things and determine that conservation value is not as important as allowing --
Right. And I would leave that up to a future ENCP to make the decision.
One of the options you can put. However, what Mike said is also true, which is, unless and until the site plan is modified, if that area is shown and denominated as an area where there will be no disturbance, under the SUNY law, it should, it has to maintain, be maintained that way.
That's right.
But that doesn't, you know, it's, you know.
You could have seven different members of the board that have a whole different attitude.
Doesn't, but someone from Columbia can answer.
And that could be, but that's why I wanted, you know, the language, the effect that you put in, the findings, that the reason you're restricting or not having, or leaving these lands undeveloped, and you list the reasons for it, they're wetlands or woodlots on it, that's why, at least you're sending a message to future boards, that's why these are the reasons why you don't want to see any further development going on there. And I think we can -- And I think we can write that. And I think the flip side of that is that it doesn't have to be a conservation easement. Gosoff can say to the effect that we will not develop on this, on this undeveloped land in the next 10 years, I always have to tell them. And it doesn't have to say I'm restricted as a conservation easement or something, it's just that, we don't want development on it, whatever you wanna call it, we don't want development. Gosoff says, we agree with you, this is valuable land, and we don't wanna, we will not seek development of that piece, that part of the property for an extended period of time. I think it gets us to the same place, too. So maybe it doesn't have the bell and whistle of a conservation easement, but gets us to the point that it stays undeveloped, which is what we're looking for, so...
And your EIS and your findings will state the ecological value of that section of the property is important for determination that it can be developed. So it takes time as it changes, and it changes all of that. So...
Then from, yeah, and the flip side of it is still, Peter, just think of it, if a planning board in the future came up with some development and approved it for the development of that, then you as a citizen could take up to court and say they never even read the review that was eloquently written in 2013.
Eloquently approved.
Eloquently approved. Okay, we got a couple of different options to hone in on that one. I think you may wanna talk to Gosoff about, get away from the gifting and conservation easement and talk about restricting that undeveloped area for a period of time, and see what they're, if they can do that within their scope of what they're allowed to do.
I have a question about the next section.
Right.
E, miscellaneous?
Okay.
Do the response, yeah, too?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm in that same spot, so.
Yep.
So A 59 is asking this question about animals being driven out of the area, and then the response in the last sentence, it says, "An adjacent large acreage of unveiled lands owned by JAM is adequate to provide habitat for any wildlife displacement." But there's no teeth to that statement, right? I mean, that land will become something else, right?
I guess that's the question, is land restricted?
Well, yeah, again, what I was thinking, I wrote down habitat assessment. I mean, we've done an extensive habitat assessment on this piece of property, and we don't address any of those animals. But I'm sure in the habitat assessment, it will discuss what's there and what's not there, to that extent. It may be just, I mean...
If there were rattlesnakes, you wouldn't be developing there. It's a state endangered species.
That's what I was just getting at, there... If the habitat assessment stated what was, what predatory animals they found when they did the habitat assessment, it might beef up this answer. That's what I'm just getting at.
Right, if it beefed up the answer, then you don't even need this comment about the large adjacent area.
Right, yeah, that's what I mean.
It leads to another question that doesn't get answered, yeah.
This is implying that there is habitat that needs to be displaced, that needs root to do something.
Yeah, and I'm saying that, if I recall, and I don't, it's been a while, it didn't come up with any of these animals on the site. So I just looked at that. Somewhere along the line, when we write green infrastructure practices, give me a definition, whether it's upfront, so that every time we go back and, okay, what were green infrastructure practices? And just throw them all in, you know, whether it's just...
From the NGBS, you're talking about from the analysis.
When you're talking about what you're using.
Yeah, what you use.
Rather than everybody get honed in on a phrase, let's have a definition somewhere, this is what we mean.
The following, right. For the sake of this document, when we use this term, it means, you know, any or all of the following.
Will the score, Bruce, will the scoring chart work for that, the list? Remember the big chart you guys did, the comparison?
No, there's a lot of...
Actually, well, we have a better answer. I mean, green infrastructure is, it's an evolving science, so I can give you 10 examples today, and there will be 15 next month.
Right, so you define what you're using it, yeah.
But we'll give you the DEC definitions moving forward. They've got criteria, they've got examples of practices.
Right, but how are you using it, is what we're about in this. You're gonna be using it for stormwater, rain gardens, whatever, forest pavements for the green infrastructure.
So you want our list of...
Relative to this development is the follows. I think you should, yeah, I think you should include it. Because the DEC might say five things that you don't have. They might say you do a green roof, and I don't see green roofs then on the project.
It's just, it's a generic term, and it might mean a lot of things to a lot of different people, and...
And it does, by the way, you're absolutely, yeah, you're absolutely correct.
Yeah, and so I just wanna...
It's a Chinese menu.
When you're, when we're talking about it for this project, our green infrastructure practices are, and then just kinda screw flaws, and then we can just go...
Bruce, it feels like in this section, when you're referring to green infrastructure practices, you're talking about the retention basins or bio something.
It's very, it really is specific to surface water, stormwater management tools.
Right, that's what I, every time I read it, that's what I...
Right, that's the term of art right now, and water quality management is really what it's about, yes.
Yeah. But I just, you know, because it does come up in other areas, too, and we can just refer back to...
Okay, no, that's a very good point, 'cause we, they're on, they're on the plans. They're spelled out on the plans, and we'll just get it in here for you.
And it's gonna be different than if you're doing it inside the building? You're gonna be talking about green infrastructure in the building?
Yeah, I mean, right now, GIS, green infrastructure, really, again, term of art is, is about the infra, the term infrastructure is the site improvements, more so than the buildings themselves.
Yeah.
So your low-flow fixtures, what are you calling that?
Green building practices.
Green building practices.
Okay, okay, that's, then that's how you're gonna define it, that's what I'm saying. That's good to define it that way, so that it's...
Infrastructure is the terminology that's all of this that's serving the bigger good. And green building practices are within the envelope, generally, of the buildings.
Right, that's exactly why it needs to be defined, yeah.
I'm just thinking of the audience and, you know...
Yeah, no, that's exactly what it's being defined.
Okay. Twenty-eight. Twenty-nine.
Sort of a common, uh, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, the parking. The proposed parking spaces include faculty houses, which is 45 spaces, and there's some indefinite amount of employee units that need to be provided. Those folks don't seem to be likely to be restricted. Seventy-five spaces for, 45 spaces for faculty housing, some number for employees and for the clubhouse parking. Bring you up somewhere around 75 maybe, possibly, potentially. It's not clear, but the question is, how many of those spaces that are not morally restricted because of student status are going to have parking that you can't restrict? So we say 30, uh, we're gonna have student spaces, but restrict the number of cars. Is that restriction going to apply to faculty, to clubhouse parking, or to student employees?
Yeah.
Is that good amount to, if it, and whether it's 75, that's roughly 1/5 of the 350 spaces? So those people are gonna get a lot of...
Say that again.
Faculty, employees, and students, clubhouse parking. It's gonna be dedicated to those people, can't be restricted, in a way that you can restrict the students. If it's condition of release, you can't park it, right? I'm just concerned there's enough built into that number. So when you think that you're reducing it down from the required amount to 350, you're not reducing it universally, you're going to have to provide two spaces for the faculty housing?
I'm not...
You're saying, George, you're saying if you're reducing, you don't necessarily reduce the faculty spots.
Correct, and the clubhouse parking, student...
Well, they did reduce a little bit back there.
Well, we banked, we banked, we didn't reduce, we just banked. First of all, we're not, we're banking the spaces, so we're, I mean...
You're banking more of the student spaces, is what...
No, we're banking, actually, a significant portion of the faculty section as well. We're banking that whole, that whole lot there, except for on-street parking.
So your lease is going to survive?
Our lease is going to provide...
When someone misses a faculty, they're gonna be told they can get one space, not two?
On the street.
They have a few spaces on the street, actually, they've got more than enough spaces on that street.
You need the zoning apartment? The zoning is 1.5 per year.
Yeah, there's more, there's plenty of parking up on that, on the street, on that north side by the faculty housing. In my head, I think it's probably about 15 spaces up on the street. Maybe, I'm off, but I...
Taking that, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
But, okay, does everybody but me understand? 'Cause that's okay, we can move on.
Well, yes, no, I think George was thinking that when we were land banking, we were land banking only student parking, and therefore the percentage went off.
I mean, it's not like these spaces are striped on the street. These five will be for employees, and these five will be for students, and these 10 will be for faculty, 'cause this is an overall computation of what we need.
Mm-hmm.
And we're not dedicating and/or, first of all, we're not reducing, we're land banking. And we all hope that moving forward, society doesn't need these parking spaces, but...
Well, I think you're taking the right steps to encourage that.
But if we do, we haven't, so...
I would only throw one word, we're not hoping, we're making provision for youth's parking. So when the faculty members show up with two cars each, and the students show up with one car...
There's plenty of parking elsewhere on the property. There's plenty of parking for them, right?
Not everybody's got a car. There's gotta be some provision that's gonna use to control that. I think that was discussed at some point in the FDI.
We'll just, we'll go back to the numbers, we'll go back to what we had.
And the math wasn't corrected yet.
Hopefully, the site plan is sort of discouraging, bringing the car, because it's gonna be better not to have your car.
Well, it's also a fee to bring the car.
Right. The college could tell the students about all the deer car collisions and scare them.
Well, it could be like the high school, we can park it out underneath the wreck car, underneath the sign.
It's still cheaper to take a cab every day than have your car in campus, so...
My cab driver's willing.
And it's only five bucks around town, if you took it every day back and forth, it's still cheaper than the cost of owning a car, so...
Okay, anything else on 29?
Yeah, well, it's, again, the use of the word non-regulated buffer area. Can we say something that's, that was offensive?
We'll go through and do a replace for that whole thing, yeah, I noted that.
Okay. Page 30.
I had a question there on, under G, environmental assessment. Just reading that section, it's not a direct connection, but in Spider's report, the November 13 report, he talks about the board is very disturbed, but he, and then he's talking about most of the species are common, but he did say that there were pin oak and butternut, and then, quote, "forgetting one are uncommon and worth preserving." But I haven't seen any mention of his suggestion of those particular varieties.
Oh, he has that thing that he came out with...
Right.
It's a map, I think, it's one of the appendices maps, right?
They are preserved.
Yeah, it's one of the appendices, and he talks about mapping the trees and which ones should be transplanted someplace better.
Yes, right.
He goes into a lot of detail in a separate publication. But is that, is that mentioned, let me see?
Pretty sure we do.
You know, Spider only came up with that late last fall, so it wouldn't have been in the DIS.
But I think we've, subsequently, we've had these conversations with him, and mapped out that specifically, what you're talking about, I think we have mapped out with him, and will be a new appendix, if it's not already.
But so this will refer to it so that people can find it, 'cause obviously, Tim didn't find it.
All of the above, that's why I need Spider and Martin here.
Yeah.
Well, okay, let's make a note.
She's identified by GPS point, there's a point.
Yeah, so if that appendix exists...
It does, it says section U of the FDI.
I saw it today.
But it's in this, it's referenced in this document?
Here?
It should be referenced here, is what you're asking.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yep.
All right, we're gonna put appendix, we're gonna put your appendix here. You and, yeah, see, I remember that one, too. Okay. Anything else on page 30?
Uh, wait a minute, let me see it. No, I just underlined something and didn't tell myself why. Oh, yeah, that's a very...
I don't know where section U is, but it's in the section U of the entire document.
31 refers to FDI's section U.
Yeah.
That's right, that's probably the right way to do it, or, and/or section or appendix number, I would say. Just add appendix reference.
All right, we'll pick that up, and we'll, you know...
It's referenced there, but we'll add it there.
We'll add, yeah, at a sense.
I got it, that's fine.
Okay. I hope there's no comments on 36. But then again, you never know, report. Anyway, 37. 38. I did take out the third power branch down.
Oh, I, did we, on 37, there was a little dot on provide two-dash-shared car parking spaces that can be shared by residents? And does the two-shared mean parking places for cars that are shared by two students?
No, those are the Hertz Shared Car Parking Agreement that this will have.
Okay, so the hyphen goes with shared car, not two-shared, I see.
Not two-shared spaces, two-shared car. I'm, sorry, it's page 37.
37, the last dot.
Oh, I see it, I got it.
When I, when I saw where the hyphen was, it just...
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Made me wonder, it's just a typo.
Okay.
That shared car is described elsewhere as well, so...
Right, and the math on the stuff above still needs correction, but if you do all the math, you come out with 517 parking spaces instead of 505.
I'm sorry, you said a 505?
Yeah.
Oh, there it is.
I just did it longhand.
Oh, the old way. Okay, anything else on 37?
And then when you add the 32 additional spaces, you end up with 549.
I, okay.
Doug, lucky Doug's not here today.
Well...
He's gonna bet for that one, huh?
Last time when I mentioned it, he said, "Ugh."
He admitted.
Oh, so he's already admitted it.
Yeah, at the last meeting.
So I gotta give him a little more trouble. Okay.
Okay.
Well, he's got the five forty and that could be on there.
Yeah. Page thirty-eight.
Oh, I couldn't help but sort of envy, or not envy exactly, but wonder at students who are deterred from attending a college because of the quality of their housing. When I think of the wretched dorm room I was in, God.
Won't speak to Karen.
It's cinder block walls.
Karen's state of the housing and what it is.
Oh, dear.
What we accepted is different than today.
Yes.
Yeah, and I had to walk to school uphill both ways.
Both ways, I knew that was coming next.
There we go.
Okay, and I, let's see, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, I took out the last sentence. I didn't think it added anything to it.
Can I just go back? I'm not sure what page this is on because I have, I guess, the draft one. I think it's the same, and it's on my thirty-eight, might be your thirty-nine. But it refers to the college president's letter about, I think some kind of quote about him, you know, students driving, getting in their car and driving the campus, and that the college is going to discourage the use of means other than driving a class by its continued effort to remove parking spaces within the campus. Now, we've talked about this a lot. Is there anything else referenced in his letter that they're gonna do besides moving parking spaces to assist with your development? Moving to the three, was there anything else in his letter that kind of?
They're connecting the sidewalk.
There is a site.
Thirty-two.
Yeah, I know that, but I mean, is there anything else policy-wise that they're doing that will?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
I think the only thing you got is the master plan, SUNY's master plan, it shows where the buildings are going up or where they're proposed to be going up.
They're not like discouraging like freshmen, sophomores can't have cars or.
I think if freshman, I don't know what their policies do.
Freshmen, I don't think can, but I'm not sure about, you know, the other, or if it's costs more to have a pass or, you know, something, you know, like a fee-based.
Yeah, nothing came up, you know, we talked about that, nothing's come out of the transportation committee and that, I think this, you know, whatever they're discussing is important. I just, I'm not sure if it's come to conclusions or when it, when and if it will come.
Yeah, it's more curious, okay.
Yep. Okay. I'll go biking and pedestrian. Did you see that?
Yeah, I got it.
Okay.
It's thirty-eight, anything on that?
Thirty-nine.
I had a question about biking, but I've asked this before and, and, you know, about the idea of having covered, you have like two hundred and sixty-four spots for bike parking.
Yeah.
And you said they're definitely gonna be covered, but maybe I missed it, but do you differentiate the covered versus non-covered in that two sixty-four number?
Actually, it's.
They'll all be covered.
It's all covered.
That's all covered and then we have a number that are uncovered.
Yeah, it is.
Uncovered is just gonna be up at the clubhouse, the people are just riding.
It's like an outdoor rack, yeah.
Right.
The idea is if you're at the clubhouse, you're not safe in there, you'll ride back to your apartment.
I think, I think you'd probably wanna highlight the fact that they're covered, I mean, that's, that's a.
That's a real problem.
That's where you say that the bike storage is provided throughout, one bike per dwelling unit, bike rack, and two hundred and fifty-eight bike rack spaces, and those are covered bike rack spaces?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Majority of the racks be located within the common roofed area of each building. Okay, so it doesn't say they all, well, it says the majority of the bike racks will be located within the roofed areas of the building.
We just left that open because there's some uncovered bike racks up at the clubhouse.
I see, watch out. So the student housing bike racks will all be covered, so maybe that's a better clarification of that then.
You have a reference on the site plan.
Yeah, I think that does, yep.
Okay. Anything on forty?
The next paragraph on that page talks about bike symbols. This should be consistent, or I guess, will they be consistent with whatever is being used on the campus in terms of signage and symbols?
No. I think we incorporate charos at the request of the planning board.
Yeah.
We're gonna have symbols on, we're gonna have a bike path to stop at the SUNY housing?
We're going to have charos on the road, but we'll stop at the boundary.
Because SUNY doesn't acknowledge, or it doesn't have them, or doesn't know about them, or whatever?
No, it came with the recommendation of Legusta to include that.
For me, but, but I'm just curious as to why, yeah.
Why the college doesn't do it?
Yeah, why don't they, they don't know about it?
I don't know.
I don't know.
Are we certain they don't have them?
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure they don't.
Yeah, they definitely don't.
They don't have them.
They don't have them in the room.
But they do have, I mean, they have extremely wide bike paths that, and pedestrian paths, I guess, they're separate.
Whatever's on one side, if it's on the other side, it's.
Well, they don't have anything, so ours is.
Better.
Well, that's.
Well, there's this, they, they have bike paths on the campus, so somebody's gonna ride in the road, or they're gonna ride on a bike path in the campus, and it's a wider road.
It's a wider path. I actually think.
They have three sizes of paths based on the.
Right, right, based on their campus plan, right. Okay. We might want to tell them to look at charos, so, but they, they have them on the paths, you can see on the paths there though, so you don't need it. You don't have bike paths through here, so that's why you have charos.
Correct.
Yeah, that's why we said that.
Okay. Anything else on forty? Let's look it over to forty. Two. Um, in that response, that last paragraph, I think there's an opportunity to rewrite that paragraph. What I wrote down, and I maybe need some measurements and things of that sort.
And, and the last paragraph on forty-two?
Last paragraph on forty-two.
It kinda continues over to the next page.
It continues over to the next page. Presently, there are five east-west roads within a five-mile section between Main Street and Route thirty-two, siding with Jansen, going through the college, going through Platico, Deering Main Street, and Henry de Bois. So there were five in a five-mile stretch connecting those two roads. Right now, a sixth doesn't actually bring anything benefit. The real question is getting over the river or over the thruway. So connecting two oh eight and thirty-two are nice, but we already built five connections to them within a five-mile stretch, and one more is not gonna do anything differently on it, so I think.
Well, it would be, especially, it would be important for the student driving, because if they had a connection to two oh eight, they wouldn't have, take two oh eight down to Main Street. It'd be a lot easier than making a left turn at night and enter thirty-two, because if they had a connect, a direct line, they'd go to two oh eight and go to Main Street.
Yeah, well, again, it's, it's going either through wetlands or through a college property
on that, and that's.
Yeah, it goes through a college.
And the college doesn't have any, and, and once you get through the college, unless you're coming in the back gate, which, I mean, the rail back at the.
Surface road back.
Yeah, that's, until that gets done, it's really inconvenient. I'm just thinking, from a traffic point of view, it's not going to relieve any of the east-west bottlenecks that we have now by putting another road in there, because it doesn't connect anywhere further than that.
You still end up having to choke at the bridge and choke at the thruway.
Right.
You're gonna choke no matter what.
Yep.
So.
That's why everybody will stay on Main Street. I will, we'll rewrite that.
So you're gonna take a look at writing that?
Yep.
That would be wonderful, cause you're far more familiar from a practical sense for us.
I'm not sure if that stub road on Harrah Sills connects up to your right place either, for that matter.
That's further south, it's in fact, it's south of Bellaterra.
Yeah.
If you came straight across.
Way south, way south of here.
Yeah, and you'd have to go through the trees we're trying to save.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's over a thousand feet from, from where the roadway.
South of where you are, yeah. Um, page forty-three, one, two, three, the big, big paragraph, third line up from the bottom, sponsor will consider additional comming measures. The only thing I wrote down is like what? So hang it out. If you're thinking of them, what are you thinking about? Tell me.
Okay.
Question on the paragraph above that, does the, the road will be destructed by the city? And city seems to have interfered, suffered some, uh, budget, budget structure. So I just think it needs to be a condition of the program. There's some cause to when that condition gets triggered.
Where, where is this, George?
Right here, right here, the connector road between the projects, referring to the new exhibit.
We have, we have.
Okay.
Statements from the college saying they will do this to connect this project and.
Question is what?
Question on the typical peak volumes, versus Saturday volumes are comparable but slightly less than, less than the weekday evening peak hours?
That makes sense.
That's what I believe they're saying.
Yeah.
I find that hard to believe.
I don't know how to respond to that.
I thought the traffic study didn't do.
A weekday peak is really fierce. Saturday, it doesn't peak.
Maybe that's it.
Well, that's, and I think what they're referring to is that information comes from the DOT tube studies, not the peak studies. So it's average flow. Okay.
Well, it's DOT, it's, so.
Where's Maiden Lane?
Yeah, I'll, I'll look, I'll clarify that, um, cause I, I believe what's being referenced here is, is A D T type of average daily flow in the tube studies versus the peak flows.
All right.
I think is the differentiation, and.
You have a traffic study anywhere, right? So this is just extrapolated from that.
Right.
From both our study and a DOT.
It must be DOT, because I don't think your traffic study is really as bad. I think you did like.
No, it did, well, it said, but it's saying it collected by the DOT and the DOT's tube path, so, so they're, right.
Okay.
Are you on page forty-four?
I'm on page forty-four, which is the continuation of the narrative. Um. I think the question that was raised. Friday peak, David Porter brought up the Friday P M. Peak traffic should be looked at as this is a busy time for traffic. You referred back to Friday, Saturdays throughout the year could possibly have higher volumes due to SUNY New Pauls events. I'd rather you go back and look at whatever ratio DOT uses to ratio Friday and Saturday traffic. SUNY does have events, but don't have a lot of them. If you look at our typical traffic on Friday nights coming into the town, it seems to be higher than.
Yeah.
Other days, and it doesn't get triggered by events.
It's not, it's not college-generated, you're saying?
I don't think so. No, it's probably tourism stuff.
It's a start of, start of a weekender and things of that, so they just add to, all right, so, but DOT is doing two counts, saying, hey, this is what we see on Saturday, Fridays and Saturday nights from DOT.
Have, are there any more, more current study than two thousand eight and two thousand nine on Sundays?
I'm assuming they gave us the most recent studies from the DOT and then what we conducted would be on top of that.
So it's just a percentage.
Much more recent.
The one, ours was conducted, I think, in two thousand and eleven?
No.
September, yeah, cause after school was in, schools in session.
During school session.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying people will flag and say, hey, Friday traffic's backed up regardless of whether anything's going on at SUNY. And so what I'm saying is, look at what Friday, Saturday DOT counts we're looking at, use that as, and maybe it's the average or maybe it's the peak, but go back to that. I mean, I can tell you it's, come, come Memorial Day weekend, Friday, it's gonna be a high traffic. Oh, why? We got a craft fair going out on the fairgrounds.
Right.
Middle of August, we got a.
And then the leaf peepers.
And then, then in October, we got the leaf peepers, so.
Yeah, I don't drive east. I live west of the Walk Hill.
You can't come back.
Do my shopping in Marble Town.
Really?
Oh, it's ridiculous.
Oh, yeah, you can't, you can't cross the bridge. It depends on what time of day and everything else.
You're not, you're not alone in that, that's.
That season's on that.
Everything has its quirks and that's.
Oh, yeah, I got one length, so, okay. Come on, forty-five, which is.
Well, I have a question on forty-four before we move on.
Okay. Yep.
And this is the third big paragraph, and I'm looking sort of in the middle of it after the reference to appendix K. It says, since the student population will not increase, the proposed student housing located south of the campus will relocate the existing commuting student population to new residences adjacent to the campus. In a way, I sort of don't understand that sentence, but if it's talking about how students who are farther out will be relocated closer so they won't be driving, it ignores the fact that other people will be moving into those apartments that are emptied by the students who move into the new residences, and they will still be driving whoever is in whatever houses still exist. It's not as if.
No, I think the premise of their analysis is ninety percent of the students will come from, from commuting distances and not from the village. So what we're doing is taking those ninety percent of the students or six hundred and three hundred.
Oh, and so whoever moves into the vacant apartments might not be interested in commuting to the village, they might be going to.
Yeah, there's seventy.
New York or Poughkeepsie or.
Yeah, we're just really not changing the core of the village housing market, they'll still be filled to where they are filled now. But that six hundred and fifty students who drive now on a daily basis to SUNY New Pauls to attend classes will now live there and not need to drive from wherever they came from.
Yeah, but, you know, I still wonder about the backfill. You know, if the students won't be there, somebody else will be there, what will they be doing?
Um, well, we're talking about ten percent or talking, you know, seventy students. That could be two houses, I'm like, I'm not sure how they're living. But you're talking about maybe seventy out of a population off-campus in a village of close to, I don't know, fifteen hundred or sixteen hundred students, maybe even more than that.
Well.
It's not a big number to backfill. And if it was family, it'd be even less, I mean, family.
We assume that the backfill is gonna be mostly against students, and so they will be commuting mostly to campus, and so I think the, the traffic analysis looked at most commuting. And so I think the, the traffic analysis looked at most commuting patterns are coming from these other directions, from off the thruway and then south on, I forget the name of the road, two oh eight or whatever.
Two oh eight and thirty-two.
Yeah, yeah, and so they wouldn't be on those roads most likely.
I think that, well, that sentence was trying to get at.
Is the redistribution essentially is what it's discussing.
Yeah, the, the assumption of emptying the houses and then backfilling the houses goes through a lot of issues in this, and it's.
Yeah, cause that's.
It was carefully studied from our standpoint that it's not, it's not a draft stick infilling. It's more of the students where the housing is not met on a commuting basis and the traffic issues. So I, I think we might be able to reword that to make it a little more user friendly.
Okay. Forty-five.
Yeah, a question on the bottom. The, we're talking about accident studies and the final statement, final two lines, I guess. Part of the DES coordinated review, the NJYS DOT suggested that detailed accident analysis, including collision dive be provided. The traffic impact study reviewed the accident data within the project limits. And what was, what's the project limits? Is that as defined above?
Yeah.
The project study area defined by the town extending to South Manon, Main Street, that?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the, the project area defined by the scope, and what they found out was that a lot of the accident studies were being provided were, were outside of our scoping limits, first of all. But then we did study further.
So Main Street is in your scoping, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Accidents do not warrant any mitigation efforts due to the major quantity of accidents that occurred.
And the, the study of the accidents, it says Village of New Falls Police Department. Does that also include state police and the sheriff's department?
I, I believe it did, but I would have to clarify.
Could you check that? I mean, I've seen personally three students hit on Main Street. I never saw anybody hit before. I lived up here, so. It just, it just seems crazy, so if you could just look at that accident.
Can you just replace Villages of Falls with Town of Falls?
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Let's see who's paying the bills again.
No, that's right, that's right.
I'm on a different page.
Yeah, it's, it should be town.
Okay, anything, you can go to forty-six. Judge, condition of approval is the additional traffic counts?
Do you have a review of this one, right here?
Yeah.
Condition of approval is for, I just kind of changed the wording on that.
Okay.
It's understood additional traffic count analysis will need to be performed, and I just said would be performed. And I may get more affirmative, I guess, and that after phase one and phase two, as a condition of approval project? That this will be a condition, but I guess that's gonna be our condition.
Well, it's gonna be a condition the traffic study be done. Next question is, what happens if the numbers diverge from the anticipated outcome?
So.
So.
So I think just the wording on that just needs to be that it's gonna be performed. And you know, that whether, how it's gonna be a condition of approval, and then determination of the results and how that's met, something to that effect, right? Well, yeah, we'll figure that out.
Right, but it'd be something DOT is gonna review.
Right, but the question is what can they do about it?
Yeah, ma'am.
We want to identify, we want to look and see if there's potential mitigation, contingent mitigation can be.
Okay.
It could be really interesting information, given the fact that the town is identifying that whole area for further development also.
Okay, anything else for forty-six? I'm on to campus connection and bus service, section E, page forty-seven.
Is reference to campus security entering? That's assuming that they're requested. Is that, that's not a carryover from acquire reliance on campus security providing primary police?
Pardon me, where are you referring to? Question?
Second bold sentence from the bottom.
Second bold, campus connection road, will we provide access for campus?
Provide access for campus security to enter. That's if they're acting as backup or.
It's, it's for all access. They'll, they'll still enter, I think anyone will enter. I mean, we could remove campus security and just say for all access.
Yes, why don't we remove it?
I mean.
Okay, I just.
If, yeah, I mean, it applied to everyone, but also campus security if they decide, if they're called on, called, yeah, they can come through there.
But it's, we're changing over from the.
Yeah, no, that's completely gone, yep.
Yeah, take it out.
Or we'll just further clarify it.
So for service.
For all access. Yeah, for all access, yep.
The auxiliary turn lanes at the site driveways, have you had like a deceleration lane? Is that what was, is that what that's referring to basically? What was the auxiliary turn lanes that they don't, they don't meet the thresholds? I'm just curious.
That would, the term you just, you just, like a deceleration lane, except in this case it doesn't warrant it.
Yeah, okay, great.
They get, if you really don't warrant, then they get more confusing.
Yeah, I just think people go around the people, kind of, and start speeding up, and yeah.
Exactly.
On this campus connection and bus service, can we get a little bit more details about, you know, the ongoing review that UCAT does for its bus service, its review, you know? This is, has, has been incorporated into their ongoing review of where the buses should stop, what the time, travel times and the ridership makeup is. I think they have this ongoing process on it.
Like right after first, the first response, first, we didn't have a response in here, but you probably have that. But right after in that first paragraph, you're saying, probably is where it's most appropriate to say that they continually review and assess ridership and, and funding and, and bus stops and make decisions on an ongoing basis?
Yep.
Or I think what Mike's saying is.
We're trying to hit a moving target, that's what it is.
It's basically in that question there, landing board sixty-four, give more details. Cause I don't really see where that's answered in any of his response.
Okay. So it's in further answer, that kind of, it's a further answering that, that issue.
Yeah. I mean, it must come out with a, I mean, they have requirements to come out with, their ridership, et cetera, so.
Yeah, we can pull that data, we can input it, we have it.
I would also address, I have a, service on weekends too, I mean.
Yeah, they're reviewing all that sort of stuff, yep, okay.
Okay. Forty-eight, which is related plans, exhibits, environmental assessments and mitigations, G, H and I.
So the sidewalks will be ADA compliant, and I'm gonna guess they're gonna have the drop curb and the, whatever that textured thing is and everything. But they're gonna be then bumping into the new sidewalk that I guess SUNY's gonna build? And will that be then? Because once you get down past those parking lots, that can't be ADA compliant through there, because it's all.
Our parking lot or theirs?
Theirs, yeah, theirs.
Well, I would imagine theirs has gotta be ADA compliant.
Because it can't be, it's just like really steep, you know, some of that going down through those parking lots and everything and crossing the road, dude.
Where?
Which.
I'm thinking of it on, it's, it's off your site, but I'm just thinking of, this is gonna be ADA compliant.
On thirty-two?
Yeah, where the new parking lot is, right?
No, that's not, we don't have any connection up there, a new parking lot.
Right.
I'm across from the new parking lot, across from the campus.
Oh, way up there.
Yeah, I'm way up there, but I'm just, I'm just thinking as we're talking about sidewalks, I'm just thinking, is that ADA compliant through there?
One on twenty?
I'm sorry?
One on twenty?
I'm thirty-two, I'm thirty-two, I think, right, where the new parking.
Directly east of the student building, I think.
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's new parking lots, and then you're crossing the road there, and.
It's just the expanded one.
It just looks like it's, it all parked on the other side too. There seems to be sidewalks through there. That can't be ADA compliant because of the gray.
In a hierarchy of things, are, is there some way we can differentiate when somebody throws out appendix D? Okay, what was that, two or? Maybe we can use Russian lettering for the DEIS, or, I, I just, again.
Differentiate the appendices and the DEIS from the FEIS.
Aren't a lot of them the same, but some are new?
That's, I'm just, you know, just trying to, if there's a nomenclature on it.
Can we keep the appendices the same, I mean, in FEIS or DEIS?
Yeah, and if there's a new one, it's a new one.
Or it should be FEIS.
Yeah.
That's what it should be, and if there's no changes to the previous one, it's just referenced as DEIS. Cause yeah, that's exactly what has happened.
That would be clear.
Okay.
All right, yeah, that, that does helpful for me to. I did get a comment, oh, my comment is on, oh, you're on page twenty-two, right? Was that your first comment?
Beginning of the ecology section.
Yeah. Did you say the head comment?
Yeah, it was more of a question.
Okay.
This is a different.
I need yours.
Oh, okay. Yeah, right ahead.
I guess at the end of the response section where it says an environmental specialist hired by the project sponsor will visit the site once a year. I'm curious, is that ongoing during construction?
I'm sorry, I was trading.
Where, which one?
You're on, you're on the second, page twenty-two, second paragraph.
End of section.
Where we have the environmental specialists, will visit the site once a year. Is that, when, is that after construction? Or I guess, that's the way I read it, I'm at for.
Will visit the site once a year and meet with town wetland specialist James Barber to assess the site for invasive species?
Well, it says, it starts out by identifying a three-year monitoring program, which was Spider's recommendation, so it's once a year for three years.
Three years.
After construction.
After construction.
What about the second phase? Is that, do we reinstitute it?
Which one are you in?
The second phase of construction.
Is it all wetland litigation in the first?
Yeah, all wetland litigation's in the first phase.
Phase one.
Yeah.
Right, but then when phase two starts, is it going to reinstitute the monitoring?
Well, that's what I covered with it. I said the monitoring program will be used to set up a maintenance program in the future to control invasive species that reemerge. Yeah, I removed the if necessary. There'll be some program. And they can decide what it is.
Three years after the completion of construction, in phase one.
In phase one.
And then phase two will be there. Does further monitoring go on in phase two to determine if there's a structural impact on the wetlands or no? I just wanna clarify for.
Brucey, all the, all the wetlands impacts are in the first phase?
I can't read the page number. Oh, mine's draft.
Yeah.
Why is mine's a draft on it though?
Why'd you get it there?
I downloaded it today.
Yeah.
Mine says draft.
Anyway, I was, okay, I think we just wanna clarify that, that, that the three-year program is gonna be after the construction on it and that the monitoring program will be set up to control invasive species. There'll be some, whatever, if the program says check every six months or check every five years, there'll be an agreement on it, okay? And it can be as light or as heavy as whatever the, the specialists come up with.
So my question is, so when, when Spider shows up to meet with your hired specialist, who pays for Spider?
It's ongoing monitoring cost, and I think that's part of the.
So the applicant would have a, like a.
There should be some kind of endowment to pay for those.
So there's an ongoing escrow even after.
Well, it wouldn't be an escrow, it wouldn't be.
It'd be an endowment to estimate the.
Or be part of, close to the town services. We get an estimate of Spider's time for meeting with him on a yearly basis and it's part of the town's cost of services.
So the town pays for it?
Town would, the town would pay for it.
Wouldn't the applicant put up some funding for that?
Well, yeah, and again, just like emergency services or any other.
Has it worked currently? Is it like how it currently works?
For any monitoring that the town does, there's.
I think Dave knows how it works now, so. I think Spider comes up the first time free, and after that it's on an hourly rate. I think it's seventy-five dollars an hour, I'm not sure.
That's for some of the work.
That's the way he works for the town.
This would be different because it would be a condition of approval.
Yeah.
Any kind of monitoring of anything, it's gonna be an account of some sort, and this would be whether we needed Dave to go out to look because there's an agreement on checking the road, something or other, the, whatever it is, right? Wouldn't it be out of that type of account?
I think we did do one for stop and chucking.
Well, you have inspection fees part of the.
Right, so this would be inspection fee.
Too, I mean, that, we're gonna have to post them, so.
Bond or whatever, yes.
Just as a minor point on this, in general, if this is going to be the DEIS, I don't think we should refer to individuals. What if Spider, I have all the confidence in world him.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
But what if he decides to move to Borabor and.
I, I was gonna raise that too.
Check it by title or.
Well, it's town specialist.
Town specialist, period. You don't need to comment.
When, when you refer to Spider and, and working with him on the current work of doing that, that's fine.
I'm going, don't.
But, but again, you know, when you're going out, it's, it's really working with the town wetland specialist.
And then I'm, I'm curious, because in Spider's November thirteen report, he talks about, and this is from his report, such a program could be managed and implemented by a team that includes SUNY faculty and students, forming an important part of the education program. So it doesn't seem like you guys have mentioned doing stuff like that in this report. Have you chosen not to, or?
What was that?
Well, I mean, the question again, I mean, I'm sorry, I was dicking notes.
Spider's comment.
I, I think Spider's suggesting that SUNY has some involvement in, in these types of reviews, and that was from his report, but you guys don't mention that at all in your draft DEIS. I'm just curious why not?
That's, it's something we're right, really, I mean, it's just not thing, we're not looking to commit to unless it's a condition of approval.
Let, let's put that on, let's put that in the, I'll put it in the parking lot of questions to ask when we get them both here next week. Let's put that out there, cause it, it's a commitment of a third party, and you can't make an applicant force.
Absolutely. I'm not, I wouldn't suggest making the applicant, I'm just curious.
No, but I. But it may be something.
It just seems like an opportunity, it seems like a, a great way to, to combine this project with the college.
And that's, I just wanna tell you, that's exactly what we did with our IT. And it was, it never had to be and never was part of the secret process or the project process. It was just a, working together with the college to do it. And actually, we, we worked directly with our IT as a training exercise. We taught them for two years how to get a permit, unfortunately. And then we taught them the rest of the time in the subsequent classes how to, actually, we took the wetlands there and created mud flats. So it's ongoing, it's just nothing that was part of the approval process for the project.
I think we may wanna, we'll talk to Spider next week, but we maybe wanna stick a sentence in there to highlight that, if possible, you know?
Yeah, and you have to see if SUNY's interested, which you would think they would be, but so.
Okay.
It can be a problem to be too specific about these things. The important thing is to not, by writing something in, exclude all sorts of possibilities that may occur depending on how the students, the college, whatever, people are actually on the ground and have interests and things that come up with, so.
You mean not dictate a process that might be, they may have come up with something better?
Yeah, or something else, or something. Yeah, or something else, or something that would work better.
It might be not the, the group that Spider's thinking about, but it may be another group, or maybe other people, okay. Well, we'll try to word that in there, but it's, you know, I've, I've marked it there, I think we've highlighted, we'll try to get a word in on that.
It's hard to hit the right balance between specificity and-
Yeah.
No agreement whatsoever. It was just a, ongoing discussions, because it changed every semester. Every semester, the school decided to, to, again, one semester, the priority was looking at the approval process, another semester is the design process, but it was, it was just simply part of the curriculum that they would come back to us. They ultimately had our wetland specialist teach some of the-
So what Lynn is saying is, is right, that you don't want to lock yourselves out of anything that would develop down the road.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can put it in association with that, but we marked it, we'll, we'll think of the right word in on it, but I think it's a good idea. And it's nothing, anything else on page twenty-two or twenty-four? Page twenty-three? Twenty-four.
Twenty-three, generally, the vernal pools, we need to consider, how to watch whether or not they will work in the long term. I think that's, I think they're good, I'm not sure that they're-
Well, I think you want-
I think they could be presented as experimental, because I think they are experimental. And I don't think it's a sensible requirement to put in having vernal pools in places where they hadn't been before. But as a, an experiment in seeing if you can create these things and have them work, it's quite interesting, and it could be wonderfully useful to people doing ecological studies and environment, you know, environment.
Yeah, we have, we have the ongoing three-year monitoring program where the wetland inspector and ours go out and meet. I think what we want in, probably in that report, is probably a report not only on invasive species, the status of the vernal pools, and, you know, kind of a report on, on a few of different areas on it that we could chat down as, as part of a, their, their monitoring that's going on.
This is, what I would like to say is, this is a good example of why I'd like Spider and Martin to be in the room
Yeah.
to discuss that topic. Vernal pools have taken on a little bit different life moving forward with the next iterations of stormwater and green infrastructure. Before, we had a lot of the green infrastructure practices, vernal pools were a little more risky business as far as getting created and sustained. Now, and, and if we start to scrutinize our site plan, I think you'd see that we've tried to incorporate both the green infrastructure with the vernal pool, which is, was Spider's concept. I prefer not to say more, because I'd really like those two experts to be in the room.
Again, you know, it's another spot that we want to flag and raise a question when we get those two guys in the room here, okay?
But-
Unless we, unless we focus them on it, they'll tend to wander.
Questioning about what was on his mind, but I felt that would be inappropriate, since it wouldn't be something at a general meeting, so.
Well, he's, he's your consultant, so, yeah, he's been a great resource.
Yeah, he definitely is. You know, I, I just find the, the stormwater detention ponds and the various stormwater things extremely interesting all over the place, because of course, if you have water in a depression, it does collect a whole bunch of animals right away. Some of the most important discoveries of dragonfly nymphs have been found actually in wheel ruts.
I always thought that was Spider's, not Spider's, mosquitoes growing round.
I just think it's kind of fascinating that this should be attempted as part of a design. It's icing on a cake.
Okay.
That's exactly what I think the board wants to put in findings at this moment. Because otherwise, it's a conditional, it's a part of the site plan, and will need to be revisited or removed as a site plan, site plan requirement if it doesn't work.
Yeah.
We can just contemplate that possibility.
Okay.
We would, a bonus would be one word, what we'd like to say is it's a positive impact of the project. I mean, we would, we do feel there's a few positive impacts to this project, and I don't think we should be-
Fire, grab them when you can.
I don't think we should be afraid to say that, and I'll stop there.
But, but I think what George is saying is, if it doesn't work as a vernal pool, if it just turns out to be a nice frog pond, that's fine.
I think, I think Spider brought that to our attention when we met with him a while ago, there were several benefits to,
Yep.
you know, improving the quality of the wetlands.
Right.
Because I've seen separate test pits that turned into really nice little-
All right, getting back to the document, folks. Page twenty-five?
I have a, I have a question on page twenty-five, which yours came in. If you have a question in mind, I think you should have it. Yeah, okay. Response, okay, in several places. Here, this is where I noticed it for the first time, the applicant is saying, it's, it's not regularly- the wetland project is not, the wetland course law is not approved, of course, and so now there's no legal basis for-
It says it's not legally adopted.
It's not legally adopted, so it can't be enforced.